There we go, all right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of September 12th, 2022. In accordance with L.B. 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin with the business of the City Council, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Sandra Washington for appointing a personal privilege.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you look at the dyes, you'll see that we're all wearing lays. And the lays were given to us by the Mental Health Association of Nebraska, first to recognize that it is Suicide Prevention Month, and secondly, to recognize the good work that they do in our community to care for all of us.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's a very important month, and thank you for distributing the lays for all of us. So appreciate it. The clerk will call, the order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month, Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Today's, on today's agenda, first item of business would be our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on these items? Please come forward. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I am Rae Sefranik, representing the Telecommunications Cable Television Advisory Board. I am here to introduce an applicant to the board, Jamie Wentz. He probably needs no introduction to this group. He's currently with the University of Nebraska as the Technical Director at the College of Journalism and Mass Communications. Prior to that, he spent eight years as the Station Manager for L.N.K.T.V. We think that he brings a really broad perspective to the board and are excited to, very excited and grateful that he's willing to come back to the city and serve.
Welcome back, Jamie. Good to see you.
Yeah, thanks. Good to see all of you.
Great. Would you like to say anything to us at all?
Pretty much summed it up. Yeah, I feel like I have, you know, background. Prior to coming to the city, I was also the manager for the public access channel that used to be Time Warner Cable, now they're Spectrum. But so, I feel like I bring kind of a good background on both sides of public and government access, and hopefully can bring some of that knowledge to the board.
Very good. We're anxious to see you again. And any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none.
Just thank you.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. Thank you very much. Mr. McDowell.
Good afternoon, council members. T.J. McDowell from the mayor's office, and I have the distinct pleasure of introducing four nominees to you today for city boards and commissions, first three for MAC and then one for the Commission on Women and Gender. So the first person I'd like to introduce is Luke Peterson. He's a candidate for MAC. Luke is currently a board member of the Lower Platte South Natural Resource District. Luke Peterson is also a member of the Nebraska Red Ribbon Coalition, a statewide HIV/AIDS advocacy organization. It's a nonprofit guided by self-identified members of the HIV/AIDS community where advocates are in council with the State Department of Health and Human Services to advance the needs of the HIV/AIDS community and to end the stigma of HIV in the state of Nebraska. I recently had the pleasure of meeting Luke. I think he's going to be a fine addition to MAC.
Thank you. Welcome, Luke. It's good to see you again.
Hello.
Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, I don't know exactly, I didn't have any prepared remarks, which is very typical of me, but I'm very eager to be on the MAC and just ready to dive right in. I did have someone to speak on my behalf, actually, the county treasurer, so I don't know if that's gonna happen now or later, so.
Okay, we can have her come forward when you are seated. Sure, come on forward, Rachel. Yeah, that's great. Welcome, Ms. Garver.
Hi. Rachel Garver. Address, did I just write it down?
Sure, and you can say it aloud for our clerk if you would.
Rachel Garver, 815 Elmwood Avenue. I'm here in the capacity of a friend of Luke Peterson. I've known him for about 15 years, and it's been exciting to watch him grow and just become the person he is. And I, I just, he's, he's, it's, it's been wonderful. It's been a privilege because he's been getting involved in so many things with his advocacy for the HIV/AIDS issues and with being a member of the board of the Lower Platte South N.R.D., and quite a few other projects and issues that he gets involved in that are things that are very important to him. And I think that it's, it's really something that's a passion for Luke to, to do things to serve his community and make things a better place for us here in our community and in the world. And I really am proud of what Luke has done, and I think he will be a great asset to be on, it's MAC?
The mayor's.
It's the mayor's advisory, multicultural advisory committee, yes. And I think I, I highly recommend that he be approved.
Thank you for being here and advocating on his behalf. I also have to say, I don't remember ever not knowing Luke, and he's a, a member or lives in District Number 4, but you used to.
Used to. Now I got gerrymandered into James Michael Bowers District.
Okay, well, there you go. That's all right. I still like you.
Well, since it's been mentioned, I've been here since 2007. I'm originally from South Central Nebraska, born and raised on the farm, and love Lincoln. Don't consider any other place in Nebraska to move to. This is my forever home, hopefully. And always, always looking for something to do. So that's something that just guides me every day when I wake up. I just want to do something to give back to what was given to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and thank you for your service on the N.R.D. as well. I know that you're always out there doing busy, busy work. So other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have Suzanne Miller. Suzanne is an enrolled member of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe. She is the patient experience coordinator for the Ponca Tribe of Nebraska Health Services. She recently gave me a tour of their beautiful new facility. Suzanne serves our community by also by serving on the Boards of the Cultural Centers of Lincoln and the Indian Center, Inc. Board. If you know Suzanne, you know she has a passion and a mission for helping others and connecting the Native community. If you spend any time with Suzanne, her passion and dedication to her work is tangible. I expect Suzanne will bring that same passion and energy to the MAC.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, good afternoon, council. First, I want to start off by saying I'm honored to be here. I was graciously asked if I'd be interested in sitting on the MAC Board, and my immediate response was yes, thinking to myself, what a fantastic platform and opportunity to be the voice of our Indigenous people within our community. And here are a few examples why. Identifying issues we face within our Indigenous community. Strong commitment to the cause and the mission of the committee. Foster a sense of belonging, contribution to quality of life, and help us relate to one another. That's very important to me. To be a voice and have a collaborative impact with Indigenous community, to have their voices heard and included, and bringing awareness of culture, health, and overall wellness. Thank you for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your work with the cultural centers and everything else that you do for our community.
Appreciate it.
Other, other questions or comments? The council, none?
Just a, a big thank you to Suzanne, and she's a very busy woman, and we really appreciate you giving your time to the city in this capacity. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Tom.
And our last nominee for MAC is Pastor Tremaine Combs. I asked each of the nominees to send a few bullets that I could use for introduction. Pastor Combs sent me a full length book. I'm just going to read a few of those bullets. So Reverend Combs is the pastor of Mount Zion Baptist Church in Lincoln. He returned to Lincoln from St. Louis, Missouri, where he was highly engaged in social justice issues. In addition to serving as a pastor of Mount Zion, Tremaine also leads the Progressive Ministers Alliance, the Lincoln Black Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development, and is part of the Black Clergy Alliance. He is active in his fraternity, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and he's the author of two books. I have known Pastor Combs since he was in high school, so it's an honor and I'm excited to work with him.
Right. Thank you and welcome.
Hi. So first, I would like to say that I am truly honored to be here and excited to have this appointment. You know, it's always dangerous when you give the microphone to a Baptist preacher, so. But I was asked to talk about why I was excited to be on this committee. Well, Tugalu College and HBCU has a wonderful website that details the historical reality of sundown towns in our nation. Unfortunately, I looked and the city of Lincoln was listed, gave some history that in 1879, 150 black exodusters from Mississippi were forcibly expelled from the city of Lincoln. In 1929, 200 blacks, black citizens of the city were driven from Lincoln after a white police officer was shot, and they were only allowed to return home by the order of the governor under the threat of martial law. In the 1940s, T-Town, some of you know what that is, Lincoln's longest-held black enclave was developed due to redlining by various bankers in this city. Havelock, that is now a part of this city, had covenant restrictions restricting black ownership and residency up until the 1970s. In the 1990s, several things I remember was due to a struggle and stratification within the black community. There was a blanket statement made by politicians that residents from Mississippi ought to go home. And in the 1990s, due to city planning and development, black communities of faith were kept in North Lincoln, being told that parcels of land that certain communities of faith were looking to purchase were not planned for churches. But now, in the 21st century, each parcel is home to a beautiful, vibrant, white congregation. Now, I'm not lifting up these issues as a condemnation to our city, but to present the reality that race and ethnicity has indeed played a role in the development of policy and planning within the city of Lincoln. And we have come a long ways from these and other incidents that have affected various racial and ethnic groups and cultures within the city. And this group of concerned and caring citizens gathered by the mayor is an opportunity to make sure that these and other issues are addressed, positive policies are recommended, and awareness is raised. And I would love to be a part of that work, not just because of the concern for racial and ethnic justice and equity, but as a son of Lincoln, I was taught by this city that the salvation of the state is watchfulness in the citizen, that a good citizen strives to make their community better than they found it. And that is my goal and my desire, why I'm excited for this appointment, because it gives me another venue to be of service to this city and to be of service to my home, so that life in this community will grow for all ethnicities, races, and cultures, because we are stronger together. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Combs, very much. Questions or comments for, yes, Councilman Cho.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pastor Combs, thank you for coming forward. Thank you for agreeing to help us make the city better for everybody, but I'd like to, I think we'd be remiss, your social support system just came into the room while you're speaking. I'd like to recognize them. Would you tell us who, who you're?
Yes, this is, uh, this is my, my, my family, my wife and my five kids. My wife, Tiara, my oldest son, Michael Eugene, my oldest daughter, Mackenzie, Mary, Leah, and David Benjamin, and one of the deacons of my church is also present as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Cho, and thank you again, Pastor.
All right, I got one more.
Moving along, okay.
And this is for a nominee for the Commission on Women and Gender, but I don't think I have to introduce you two. Adele Burke. Adele is the Senior Manager of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood of North Central States, where she works to protect reproductive freedom and healthcare access for all Nebraskans. She previously served as policy aide to Mayor Larry and Gaylord Baird, leading the mayor's link, one Lincoln initiative to advance equity and inclusion in City Hall and in the community. If that sounds familiar, that's my role now. Adele currently serves as the Vice President of the Neighbor Works Lincoln Board of Directors and volunteers for the YWC of Lincoln and Out Nebraska. I'm looking forward to working with Adele in this capacity.
Thank you, T.J. Adele Burke, 3600 Smith Street. I am just really excited, want to thank the mayor for nominating me for the Commission on Women and Gender. Thank you all for considering me and for having me back here in this building. It's good to see you all. I, obviously, equity and inclusion is like a north star of a lot of my personal and professional life, and I'm really, you know, excited to be continuing to work on gender equity issues in my new role, so it's going to be an honor to be able to serve with such an amazing group of advocates that already serves on the Commission on Women and Gender, that does such amazing work, including the Women's Voices Survey. I'm excited to help continue that work and make sure that the data that's collected in surveys and the programs that they do can inform, you know, city and county policies moving forward in, in all of our work. So thanks so much for considering me.
Thank you, Adele. It's great to have you back in City Hall. Doesn't seem like you've gone far. That's right. Any questions or comments for Adele Burke?
Just a big thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, T.J. Anyone else that would like to comment on these items? Or testify at all? Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please move us on?
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Luke Peterson to the Mayor's Multicultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire September 12th, 2025, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is appointing Suzanne Miller to Mayor's Multicultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire September 12th, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is appointing Tremaine Combs to Mayor's Multicultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire September 12th, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is appointing Adele Burke to the Commission on Women and Gender for a term to expire September 12th, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1E is appointing Jamie Wentz to the Telecommunication Cable Television Advisory Board for a term expiring on September 12th, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any discussion? Oh, no, this is a hard one. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold. Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1F is reappointing Jim Johnson to the Telecommunication Cable Television Advisory Board for a term expiring July 1st, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1G is reappointing Brian Wertz to the Air Pollution Control Advisory Board for a term to expire September 1st, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1H is reappointing John Thompson to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for a term to expire September 1st, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1I is reappointing John Reinhardt to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for a term to expire September 1st, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1J is reappointing Pritah Bonso to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for a term expiring September 1st, 2025, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 2A was introduced by Cho.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Seconded by Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Hey, that concludes our consent agenda. We can move on to Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolutions.
Okay.
Bye, family.
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
I'll be calling item 4A and 4B together. Application of Off-Leash Bar LLC, doing business as Off-Leash Bar for a Class C liquor license located at 1975 M Street, and the related manager application of Brandon J. Akert.
Hello.
Hi.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is a truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Brandon Akert, address 7470 Street, number 430. Here to talk about off-leash dog bar. I could go on for way more than five minutes, so we can just skip to questions. I'm sure you guys do have some. It's kind of a different thing coming to Lincoln, so I can open it up to questions if you'd like.
Sure. Councilwoman Washington, thank you for being here, by the way.
Yes, no problem.
Thank you for introducing a brand-new concept to Lincoln, Nebraska. With that said, I have just a couple of questions, because I'd never even considered a dog bar or pardon me. So it feels like a lot of the issues are probably health department issues and not liquor, per se, but I, I am a little curious about what your plans are for managing the dogs and how we, you know, animal control.
So I have spoken to animal control, and it seems pretty straightforward in their book on how this works, just because it's, they already kind of do the same thing at like a dog park, but now you're getting a lot more introduced when there's people around and beverages, we're going to have both non-alcoholic and alcoholic, so it's not like everybody's going to have a beer in their hand, but basically, to manage the dogs is it's more about keeping an eye on things, and you have to be around your dog even when it's off its leash, so you can't just not be present, kind of like at the dog park, you're never not with your dog. It's, while it's still running around, it's away from you, you're still present with it. But then I am going to have staff members inside that area. I haven't decided if I'm going to call them the Paw Patrol or the Bark Rangers yet, but they're kind of there to do two things. They're going to, they're there to, you know, they're going to be trained so they can see they can see like signs of agitation, where if they think that a dog is about to become agitated or something like that, they can sort of intervene, but then they're also there to be a mediator between parents, which, you know, if Fido and Missy get into a tissy, Greg is gonna be like, it's your dog's fault, Moran is gonna be like, no, it's your dog's fault, so it's kind of important to have that mediator there that will be like, sorry, Greg, Fido's having a bad day, you gotta go today, feel free to come back tomorrow, so there's just certain things in place that we're trying to do to just maintain safety and maintain that there's a good experience for everyone, both human and furry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, yep, you're welcome.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Parker when we get to that point in the agenda.
Okay, sure. Councilman McGinnis?
Is this gonna be also a membership-type atmosphere?
Yes, so frankly, I have no other way to generate revenue off of dogs besides making them be members, so you're gonna have three options, basically, we're gonna have day passes, so it's $10, and you bring your dog and you can stay all day. Option two is, we're gonna have punch cards, that'll be around $60 for 10 days worth of punches, so theoretically, if you buy two, you should just become a member, because the membership's gonna be around $125, and that'll give you the full year as many times as you wanna come and go, so that's how I generate revenue off of the dogs, but then also, that's how I kind of have a way so that you have to turn in your paperwork for your dog to make sure it's had all of its updated shots, and it's of good health, and things like that, because we're trying to also mitigate the idea that, you know, dogs can spread disease between each other and vice versa, so we just gotta make sure that everybody's up to a good health standing before they come in the door.
Other questions? I have a question, so if I don't have a dog, what's, is my entrance fee different?
You're free.
Oh, wow.
You can go in there anytime you want without your dog.
Okay.
No pay, so you might have to buy a beverage or something.
Well, that I could do, could you bring your, but no other pets, correct?
Just dogs, I couldn't see a cat surviving very long in there.
Okay. I've got some pretty vicious cats.
I've got a mean cat.
A rabbit would do very well either.
That's right, okay.
Will the dogs themselves have a menu, or anything like that?
I haven't really worked it out yet, but I am planning on having something there, you know, if you can remember, like, in the 1980s, when you had your vending machines with like the, you press B9, a little door opens up, gonna have stuff like that, might have like cupcakes in it and treats, and, or like when you're leaving the old-time buffets, and they had the little gumball machines, there might be like little Milk Bones and those, I mean, there'll be stuff around, just silly, it's supposed to be silly and fun, so we're just gonna go for that vibe, you know.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, Investigator Parker, and Councilman Schob, it's your turn.
Investigator Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street.
Thank you, Investigator Parker, thank you, Madam Chair. Investigator Parker, we have people come before us all the time, on a weekly basis, asking for liquor licenses and merchandise, was this, but this is a concept we hadn't seen before, how did you approach this? Is it different than what you normally do when we issue liquor licenses or manage or?
Well, my job is specific to make sure that they're abiding by the laws of not only the state of Nebraska, but also locally, to ensure that they are complying with, you know, training that's mandated by the city, so on and so forth. I did take a different perspective of this one, just because it is new, talking with different entities, you know, the Health Department, Animal Control, reaching out to Animal Control in Omaha, just to be as informed as possible, to make sure that this is going to work, and be safe, and be a fun environment for whomever wants to go there. So it was a little bit atypical for my usual investigations, but that's just because I knew that would probably garner quite a bit of questions, because it is a very new concept for Lincoln.
Do you feel comfortable that they've met all the requirements that we have, both locally and state, and the Health Department as far as it's concerned?
I can't speak on behalf of the Health Department, I have reached out to them, I know that there's probably more work to do on that side, I don't really know, I don't get involved in that, but in terms of the liquor side of stuff, absolutely fine, no concerns at all.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Investigator Parker, Councilman Beckius?
Yes, thank you, Investigator Parker, the applicant has a long history of operating similar businesses here in town, I'm assuming that that history has been good and...
Absolutely.
Without problem, and comes with your recommendation.
Absolutely, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, great, any other questions? Thank you, Investigator.
You're welcome.
Very much. Yes, Mr. Christie, would you like to approach?
Beyonce Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. I just, the question came up about the Health Department, and I just want to be clear that there are, and I think, I think he's aware of this, there are further steps that need to happen with the Health Department, I just want everyone to be aware of that, and I would just, also reiterate, that's not actually unusual that a business might apply for a liquor license, while this concept is new for Lincoln, it's not unusual for a business to apply for a liquor license, and then still there may be additional steps with building and safety, or the Health Department, which is relevant in this case, for them to get up to code, or any other requirements that might be needed, so just wanted to be clear about that, and I see him nodding in the background, he is aware of that, so I just want to be clear with all of you about that.
Appreciate that very much, are there questions for our legal counsel at all? Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, can we move on, Mr., Councilman Schob?
Yes, Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to talk about this issue, I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 4A and 4B.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, let's move on. No.
Doggone it.
Yeah.
That concludes Section 4, we should now move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions, I'll be calling Item 5A and 5B together. Approval, 5A, Approval of Amendment Number 3 and Restatement of Telus's Dairy House Phase 2 Redevelopment Project, Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Lincoln and the Dairy House LLC, and the Related Fiscal Year 2022-23 CIP to authorize and appropriate $315,000 in TIF funds for the Telus's Dairy House Phase 2 Redevelopment Project.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, I'm here to talk about the Dairy House, or the Medigold, or Beatrice Foods, whatever name you wanna come up with, this is a multi-phased agreement, so what we're here to talk about today is a continuation of the development of a very large building that sits over on a block that is between 7th Street and 8th Street, between M Street and L Street, occupies practically the whole area. When we did the plan agreement amendment, I showed some of the pictures of the area, this would be M Street, and generally, what we're excited from a city perspective is developing pedestrian walkways along M Street, what you'll see right now is parking along this area, and if you were to be a pedestrian, you might think, well, it's gonna be difficult getting through here. Here's a, another rendering, so this would be all through M Street, and when you look at the development, a lot of discussion on the type of parking that will be allowed here, but also a pedestrian walkway, a lot of a park that will develop to the west of this, so we're trying to think about people walking and trying to get over to the park, this would be one avenue to get there. You'll also notice, part of this project, you see some overhead power lines, the power lines that run north and south will remain, but you'll see some power lines come down, so some of the visual obstructions that you see in that area will be mitigated, the developers done a fabulous job, I showed these pictures the last time, this used to be what it was like inside that building, they are renovating it, some of the windows on the exterior are being improved, so the sources and uses of the TIF dollars that were here, this would be what would typically be a smaller tax increment finance project, total amount of TIF funds that are before you is $315,000, they have Priority Number 1, which is to pay an administrative fee and the bond council fee, Priority 2 is tuck pointing on the building, and then Priority 3 is some geothermal wells that will be placed along as part of this project. The developers done, you know, they are quite focused on energy efficiency, that's the top of the building, probably have more solar panels on the top of their building than any other building that I know of in the City of Lincoln, they've put some geothermal wells in vacated right-of-way to try to, again, make their building as green as possible, which is hard to do with an older building, but I think they've done a really good job. The tuck pointing will extend the life of this building, you know, I could stop there, answer some questions, I will say, did find a 1938 article from Forbes Magazine that talked about what used to go on in this building, and it was a lot of milk, and a lot of ice cream, and a lot of butter, so as a kid from Beatrice, this was emerged originally, Beatrice Foods started in Beatrice, Nebraska, merged with Medigold Mel to appear, moved to Lincoln, and then eventually moved to Chicago, but it's got a tremendous history, and the ability to be able to adaptively reuse this building preserves some of the history that we have, and also finds a new use for this, which will not be in the production of eggs, or milk, or dairy products of any kind, so happy to stop there and answer any questions.
Questions for Director Marvin, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam. Director Marvin, thank you for coming forward and bringing this back to us, I was looking at it over the weekend, and saw that the original agreement was signed in 2011, and so just in sort of a gross overview, I was curious if there are big areas of change between when it was signed and what we're looking at today, I couldn't see that there were big changes, but I just wanted to confirm that, and then, secondly, and this will be my last question, I noticed that there were two different TIF periods mentioned on different pages, at the beginning of the document, it mentions a 15, no, page 3 mentions a 20-year TIF period, and page 58 mentioned a 15-year.
So this is a 15-year TIF project, and, you know, as a lot of times when you're drafting documents, you can get, every once in a while, get a confusing year in there, we have checked with law, the document that you have before you, I think Tim might be here too, but the document that you have before you is sufficient to represent that it's a 15-year TIF clock, the question on the 2011, and the different phases, I might leave that to Mr. Houston, because that kind of predates my tenure at the, in my current position, he might be able to give you a little more history on that.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Comments, okay.
Thank you, Director.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston, my address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900, here in Lincoln, 68508, appearing before you today on behalf of Dairy House LLC and its affiliate, really its parent company, Telus's Inc., and another affiliate, which is Data Security. I did want to talk a little bit about the history of what's transpired at this block, back in, let's see if I have this oriented correctly, yes, back in 2010, Dairy House was formed to acquire this Medigold facility of the entirety of the block, and it was a combination of approximately seven or eight buildings, and we realized it was gonna take multiple phases to really undertake the redevelopment of the entirety of the block, and so we kind of minimized the block with the map that you'll see on the overhead. The first phase in the redevelopment agreement that occurred back in January, was approved back in January of 2011, dealt with units E and F, and it's occupied by Data Security, which is an affiliate of Dairy House. Data Security provides data security to a lot of different industries, and including a Department of Defense, it's, that area has been completely renovated, really cool space, updated for offices, and some light manufacturing for the data security operations. We really thought the balance of the building would be more quickly redeveloped, but we're in front of you today, Amendment Number 3 really deals with Phase 2 of this redevelopment, and that's the only confusing thing for me, anyway, this is the Phase 2 of the redevelopment, moving down the block towards the east for units H, I, and G, really GH, I, and G, those are units of the condominium regime, condominium regime, which will again be part of the space occupied by Data Security, it's a growing business, it's had a new contract signed, it's a major employer in downtown Lincoln, and will be adding employees at this location. This project itself, as Dan described, it's approximately 12,400 square feet that will be added as a part of the redevelopment. Now, the $315,000, I don't want to minimize that, but it's not a large TIF amount, you see a lot bigger TIF contracts, but it's primarily because we're dealing with renovation of an existing building, and we just don't create the incremental value, because we have a larger base value, for one thing, but the incremental value created by this project will support tax increment financing of the $315,000. Dan did mention, we will be using it for the facade improvements, and the one thing I did want to show you in addition to that, is the facade improvements, really, this is the elevation of these spaces that will be improved as they face M Street, so it's really the north view of those facade improvements, and I don't want to minimize the geothermal wells, I meant to look up, and I think it's approximately 160 geothermal wells will be installed as a part of this phase, that will complete the installation of the geothermal wells, back in 2015, this body, the City Council approved vacations of rights-of-way and easements in 8th Street to accommodate all the geothermal wells that will provide the heating and cooling for the entirety of this building, and so all the geothermal wells will be installed as a part of this project, and really held in reserve for the future phases of the redevelopment. The other thing I would mention is that if this is the second phase of the redevelopment, obviously, there's some more units, we believe that units A, B, and K are, could be subject to a separate redevelopment agreement, a separate redevelopment project, perhaps a brewery for the Imperial Ales as a part of this suite of companies that are comprised in Telus, and the units C and D, those are the taller portions of this building, that really are probably most suited for residential development at some point down the road, but we can't undertake all that at once, and that's why we put the condominium regime in place, so that we can stage and phase the redevelopment of the entirety of the project. So we think this is a good second step, second phase of the redevelopment, demolition of the interior is underway, as is permitted by the Nebraska Community Development Law, and we believe construction will be completed hopefully by the summer of 2023 with occupancy at that point of the new space, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Houston? None?
I have one.
Councilman McGinnis, yeah?
Thank you, again, you're right, this is gonna take some time to redevelopment, they took it on, and we're happy as their company, because they're willing to put a lot of time and effort into doing this. Question for you, the other TIF project that was there, this is not part of that, we're not re-Tiffing?
Correct.
Or extending the TIF, that one stands, each of these will stand on their own.
Stand on their own, the redevelopment project number one, the first phase for, really, that corner of units E and F, that was approved in 2011, I think the effective date was 2012, so it's in year 10, I suppose, year 11 of the 15-year time period, so it's got four more years to run, at that point, it will come out of the redevelopment program, and will be fully taxable by Lancaster County, but these new units, GH, I, and G, their 15-year clock would really start in 2023 and run for 15 years thereafter.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, can we please move on?
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is Approval of Amendment Number 3 and reinstatement of Telus's Dairy House Phase 2 Redevelopment Project, Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Lincoln and the Dairy House LLC, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis, any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is amending the fiscal year 2022-23 CIP to authorize an appropriate 315,000 in TIF funds for the Telus Dairy House Phase Two Redevelopment Project, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, we're ready to move on, please.
Move on to Section 6, our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. I'll be calling item 6A, approving an agreement for tower space and appurtenances between the city and Dish Wireless LLC to occupy and use certain city-owned parcel of real property and tower generally located at 4375 South 33rd Street.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Denise Pierce, and I'm with the Lincoln Parks and Rec Department, P-E-A-R-C-E. I am also part of a multi-department team that manages the city's cell tower agreements. Assistant City Attorney Jocelyn Golden, also interim library director, is here today as well to help me answer questions. We also have a few representatives from Dish we'll introduce at the end of my presentation here. We actually have two cell towers to the south of our Star City Shores aquatic facility, and the agreement that you have in front of you today deals with the West Tower. The West Tower has been vacant for about the last year or so since Sprint terminated its agreement and removed its equipment. So Lincoln Parks and Rec worked with Jocelyn as well as Don Fares, who's our city's fiber network and right-of-way manager, on the agreement that you have in front of you. And for the most part, the agreement includes the standard cell tower language that the city's been using for the last few years. I'll just highlight a couple of things in today's agreement. In Section 2, on Page 1, you'll see that the term of the agreement is 10 years, and then it has three five-year extensions for a total of 25 years. If you jump over then to Section 5, you'll see that the city will continue to own the tower, and again, that is standard city cell tower language. Section 6 has the fee. The fee will be 2750 a month, which is 33,000 a year, and then this amount will increase 3% on an annual basis. And this is within the range of our current cell tower agreements, both with respect to that monthly rate of 2750 and also that 3% annual escalator. The last paragraph I would mention then is 26, and it's actually, I believe, the last paragraph in 26. City laws started to include disconnect procedures in our cell tower agreements. So you'll see there that in the event that this agreement is terminated in the future, Dish would be required to remove its equipment, hand in the keys, and then leave that tower in a condition that another provider would be suitable for another provider. We really appreciated the opportunity to work with Dish on this agreement, and I want to thank the council as well for your patience in returning this to your agenda for public hearing. Took us just a little bit longer than expected to get the final agreement in our hands. Before I invite our Dish friends up to introduce themselves, Jocelyn and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Ms. Pierce or for the law department? No questions?
All right. With that, I would like to invite Michael Nigro. He's the site development manager for our region for Dish, and also Jim Moore, who is Dish's general manager for our region. Gentlemen.
Good afternoon. I'm James Moore. I'm the general manager for the Kansas City region, which includes Lincoln and Omaha, which we're under development right now. We currently, as we all know, Sprint, which terminated their lease on this, was the fourth carrier on Nationwide Care, and they merged with T-Mobile as part of that agreement. Dish stepped up with our spectrum and started developing our network nationwide. So, and as part of that, in the Midwest, where the smaller cities were easier to cover, we started there first, which included Lincoln and Omaha, Kansas City, Des Moines, and currently Wichita. So right now, we've got one site left to build, which would be this site. The lease took us a little bit longer than typically they would, but we made it through it, and that's what brings us here in front of you today. Any questions for us at all?
Questions for Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Or, yes, no?
No, I don't have any. Excuse me. I'm sorry, I don't have any questions, but I will thank you because I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to work through the lease. Before coming to council, I was a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which wrote a lot of these policies around cell tower uses in parks and things like that. And so I'm glad to see the disconnect and the turnaround so that it can be used again should you ever choose to vacate.
Yeah, no, we were happy to work with you. Actually, that tower's fairly lightweight, and I was a little concerned about it at first, and we've managed through it very nicely. So we've got some room for growth on it, which we hope to do. And hopefully in the future, right now, we've built our base network, we'll be doing some further development and looking at other opportunities as well.
And I'd just like to compliment the city of Lincoln. I've worked with a lot of different cities through this deployment, and working with Denise, Don, and Jocelyn have been a true pleasure. Super responsive, very detailed, so it's been an honor. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you both very much. Any other questions or comments for our Dish representatives? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to 6B. 6B is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter A by creating the classification of police business manager.
Barb McIntyre, human resources director, 555 South 10th Street. And this is at the request of LPD. It is not adding an FTE, but reclassifying what we currently have to recognize additional duties that we have put into that position. So that is what we're doing here.
Questions for Director McIntyre? So I have a question if no one else does. Director, does that, will this be the sole focus of this position in HR, to focus solely on LPD? Can you tell us more what they'll be doing?
So this classification is a specific one. It is just a police business manager. It's only going to be for the police department, and it's truly that of managing all different kinds of aspects that we'd really think about. A business manager or an office manager handling, it's got some HR stuff, some accounting stuff. I can pull up the description, but that's truly what it is. It's a specific thing for their office.
So is it pulling job duties from LPD that other LPD department people were doing? I'm just curious.
No, she actually sits in LPD today and is doing these things. What we're trying to do is just recognize that over time, the job has grown and includes a lot of different things, and we want to make sure we reallocate it to appropriately recognize that.
Okay, well, that clarifies that. I thought it was a HR position assigned to police. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we can move on unless there's other questions. All right, thank you.
I'll call item 6C, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to pay range prefixed by the letter W by creating the classification of technology project manager.
Now, this is a vacant position that we're doing something different with for IS, and it's really to try to pull out and highlight that anyone who's working in a capacity really needs to have super project management skill sets as far as agile or your traditional kind of project management. So this has been updated to strengthen all the requirements around not only managing a team, but managing a project as part of the role. And I do have Abby here if you have more additional questions. But it is vacant today, and so we are restructuring it while we have the opportunity, and then it'll get reposted.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move on.
Okay, I'll call item 6D, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned by the pay range which is prefixed by the letter E by changing the title of pay range of class 0634 from human resources operations specialist and pay range E15 to human resources operations manager and pay range W01.
Yep, this position also exists today, and what we're doing is just recognizing additional duties we've added to it, additional direct reports that have been added to it, changing it from the specialist to giving it the manager title. It does oversee three other positions, so it's a recognition of the work we have the position doing.
Okay, questions? All right, seeing none, thank you. We can move on.
We call item 6E, amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classifications are assigned the pay range prefixed by the letter N by deleting the classifications for landfill operator 1, landfill operator 2, and landfill operator 3.
So we modernize the language around those positions, and they are now called utility equipment operators. So what we're doing is getting rid of these old titles that no one is in anymore, and we're kind of outdated.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Seeing none, we can move on.
We call item 6F, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.76.145, compensation plan, merit pay plan, administration, and requirements for advancement in Section 2.76.160, compensation plan and variable merit pay plan. W pay ranges to remove the mayor and replace with the human resources director for the approval process.
Yeah, so today, the practice is, those all do come into my office. I review all of those and the justification for all of those and sign them on behalf of the mayor. So what we're really doing is aligning our practice with our policy so they're not, so they're congruent. So that's really what we're changing, is actually making this match what happens.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, we can move on.
That concludes Section 6 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 7. Ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 7A is appeal by Anthony Dirks, a planning commission approval of special permit 22020, application of Osage Hill Farm LLC to allow for a CUP, community unit plan, for seven single-family dwelling units with associated waivers and property generally located at 7433 Southwest 27th Street, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7B is change of zone 22017, request of Osage Hill Farm LLC, change from AG Agriculture District to AGR Agriculture Residential District on property generally located at 7433 Southwest 27th Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Councilman McGinnis.
David Carey? I think he was waiting for me to call him.
I think he was. Thank you, Director Carey.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street.
Yes, thank you for coming down. This is a CUP, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, and in the CUP, we have certain stipulations that we can put in there about access?
Correct.
Okay, I got one quick question that is kind of pointed out to me. These will be public streets within the Osage, correct?
Yes, other than the temporary access point out to 27th Street.
Okay, and that won't be a public street?
That'll be private, and then it'll be relinquished eventually.
Okay, so they will not have any connection to a public street?
They may eventually, the way that this is set up, depending on what happens as far as development, either to the west of them or to the south, and depending on how those streets are set up, whether they're private streets or public streets. But they will eventually make their way to access Southwest 27th Street via those access points that are more appropriate from those other developments.
Okay.
Councilman Schulp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carey, thank you for coming forward. You said something there that sparked something to me. You said how they're developed and whether they're private streets or public streets. There's a potential for this new subdivision, the CUP, to be private and have private streets? Could you elaborate?
This community unit plan for Osage Hill Farm, these are going to be public streets. But there are other private streets in other areas nearby.
Yeah, just, okay, I was a little confused, but thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Of course, any other questions? That's okay. Thank you, Director Carey, and happy birthday again.
Thank you.
We didn't want you celebrating too early.
I know. Anyone else present that would like to speak on this item? Whoops, this is not a public hearing, sorry. Okay, we can move on, Madam Clerk.
Call the vote?
Yes, thank you.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is free nally vacation 22006, application of Adam Julian to vacate East West Audi generally located between Second and Third Streets from Lincoln Street and Shower Street. Change in the rest of the street.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D is changing of 22022, application of Tom Tina Arciaga to change zoning designation from H3 Highway Commercial District to I1 Industrial District on property generally located at 1555 Yolande Ave, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Section 7 of our agenda, we shall move on to Section 8, Resilience of First Team. We need to have an action on item 8D.
Councilwoman Washington, you're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask that, I would offer a motion to remove 8D 22R-440 from our agenda. This is an action that has been typically done by executive order instead of by council action.
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?